Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council, June Council Meeting. I will call this meeting to order and tonight, our prayer is going to be done by Travis Ryan, who is the LifePoint Church Worship Pastor, and our pledge is going to be done by Tom Rose, our Public Works Director. And Travis, if you will come to the mic and if you'll all stand with me, please.
Thank you very much for letting me be a part of such a wonderful evening as bow our heads and pray. Jesus, we praise you because you are here with us. We acknowledge your presence in this room right now. God, we know that you are here within these walls. You are before us, you are behind us, you are on our right hand and on our left hand. You are the God who fills immensity and you have come down to us here. And so, Lord, we pour out from our lips and from our hearts everything that you are to us and we know that, Lord, you hear us. Holy Spirit, we ask for your favoring presence to lead and to guide and direct the leadership and council members of the town of Smyrna right now. Make yourself known in the lives of Steve Sullivan and Jerry Short, Raquel Peebles, Tim Morell, H.G. Cole, Vice Mayor Mark Atkins, and Mayor Mary Esther Reed. I pray that our city of Smyrna would experience your presence more now than ever. God, we are aware of the situations and struggles that are around us, from experiencing the pandemic to sheltering in place, to the unrest that is happening in our country. God, I pray that you just give us eyes for the marginalized and recognizing that people of color are feeling that way. Lord, give us a heart that we can lament with them. Also, Lord, give us a heart for our justice system and knowing that good cops are often marginalized as well. God, give us a heart for them. Lord Jesus, also give us a heart for others who are marginalized, whether that pertains to gender or ethnicity or money. God, I pray that you would move in our hearts, that you would make this city a city of love, that we would love one another and that we would love our neighbor as ourself. That's what I pray for, Jesus, more than anything. God, we acknowledge that you are in control. We pray for our justice system. We pray, Lord Jesus, that you would take the center of every heart of every man and every woman and that you would take the rightful throne and rightful place. God, I pray that you would give us grace, that you would give us grace. Continue to provide for this city, Lord. I pray that this city would be a flourishing city that is for the lives of those who live in it, that we would experience, God, your flourishing here. Also, Lord, I pray that your kingdom would come and that your will would be done. And if you're watching tonight and if you're here in this room, would you just declare that and say with me, "Let your kingdom come and let your will be done." We'll say it just one more time. Let your kingdom come, let your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Lord Jesus, that is what we pray. We praise you, God, for the work that you're going to do in this place and what you're already doing in the world. It is in your precious name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Travis and Tom. Ms. Diane, if you'll do your call, please.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here. Move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the May 12, 2020, meeting and the May 28, 2020 meetings. Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Minutes pass. We'll move on to correspondence and communication. Anything tonight, Brian?
Nothing other than we have a guest that I would like to ask you to recognize.
Absolutely. Tonight, we are glad to have Lou Caputo with us. He is the CEO of TriStar Stonecrest Medical Center. And Lou's been a little bit busy over the last couple of months, but I just want to tell you what a great partnership that we have with Stonecrest and how great Lou and his team have been to work with. It's been a pleasure over the last couple of years and it's nice knowing we've got great care right here in the city limits of the town this morning.
Thank you for saying that. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I want to begin by thanking you, Mayor Reed, and the entire council for the work that you guys have done the last three months or so. I've had the privilege of having an intimate journey with coronavirus and I've had many phone calls, nights and weekends and meetings with you two as you guys have led this community. And I will tell you that personally, it has been an honor to work alongside you guys in this journey. And I, you know, when I look at what we have done for this town and this area, your neighbors, the members of this community, the business of this community should be very thankful of the work that you guys have done, leading from the front to keep this town safe. And you should be proud of the work that you have done. So, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the opportunity to represent TriStar Stonecrest Medical Center. As Mayor Reed said, I have the privilege of serving as the CEO and have done so for six years. And it is a great organization. Of course, I am partial, but I welcome the opportunity to share with you what COVID-19 has looked like in our community over the last three months, what we think it will look like moving forward, and share with you what Stonecrest is doing, what other, most hospitals are doing to ensure the safety of our community as we move forward. To date, at Stonecrest, we have tested just over 1,300 patients for coronavirus and we've been down by 95 positive patients. Fortunately, Stonecrest has never had a high census of positive patients within the hospital at any given time. We have never been overwhelmed like some of the hospitals that we have seen in the media throughout the country, and I'm thankful for that. Like most hospitals in middle Tennessee, we have been spared those surges. And I do believe that it is because of the things that you guys have done as leaders, the other elected officials have done in this community and state of Tennessee with social distancing, measured response, and the sacrifices that we have all made as a community. I think it has certainly been, given us the ability to handle the situation. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the community for their overwhelming response in support of Stonecrest Medical Center, the healthcare heroes that I have the opportunity to serve each and every day. The response was truly impressive, not just for Stonecrest, but all the healthcare providers in the community. Copious amounts of food, face masks from local manufacturers, local seamstresses, businesses, numbers of signs and letters from individuals, families, organizations, and most importantly, prayers have certainly helped us get through this pandemic and the stress that we have had within the healthcare services. We have some tremendous stories around COVID. I think of one of our earliest success stories was a young mom who was coming in for her first child and, as you could imagine, had tremendous anxiety over the risks associated with it. It was early on, there wasn't a lot of data around COVID-19 and what it meant to go into a hospital. But when you hear her story and you see her story on social media, it really is inspiring how the hospital staff embraced her, addressed her safety concerns, and allowed her to have a great experience when she was in the hospital, particularly as her child remained in the NICU for days and we had to go through special lengths to ensure that patient's safety. One of the things that we did early on and we continue to do is use technology to support our efforts. So, having the ability for the mom and the dad and the family to keep an eye on that patient using NICVIEW, which is some technology to watch the baby, helped. I think of the convalescent plasma patient that we had. He was one of the first, if not the first, convalescent plasma recipients to be discharged from a hospital in the state of Tennessee. So, while Stonecrest may be a relatively small community hospital, we really do progressive things and got to celebrate with that patient as he walked out of the hospital and into his car. So, wonderful stories here. In the past, I'd like to talk a little bit about what we're doing going forward because I think the important message going forward is that our community has a safe place to go and that we're going to tremendous levels to make sure that we're getting back to normal and that we're building back that foundation of safety for our patients and our community. I'll identify a few things that we're doing specifically. Probably the most significant thing is around visitation and how it'll feel different when you walk into the hospital. Anybody who comes into the hospital is going to be screened by an individual that is going to check for symptoms, check temperatures, similar to what you're seeing in other areas. We do have some restrictions around visitation. They're certainly not to be restrictive or negatively affect your interaction, but really to keep our patients, their family members, safe. We are limiting visitors to, or one visitor per patient. We are asking that visitors be 12 or over. We are asking everybody who enters the hospital to don a mask and then we are banning everybody to identify that they have been through that process. Of course, if you go through that process and you are a positive screening patient, either show signs or symptoms and do have a temperature, we'll ask you to not visit. And if you are a patient, to reschedule your care. I've mentioned some of the technology that we're using to use alternative ways to communicate with patients as a visitors. In our ER, it'll be a little bit different because we're not allowing any visitors in our ER. Of course, with all of our visitor policies, there are exceptions, of course. So, if you are a parent or a caregiver, a child, you'll certainly be able to enter the hospital. If you're a birth partner for a labor and delivery mom, you'll be able to enter. A caregiver for a surgical patient is certainly an exception, or somebody that is end of life or hospice care that needs to have an individual. So, we are doing it on a case-by-case basis, but have some general guidelines, again, to protect our patients, to protect our staff, and protect our community moving forward. For all of our surgical patients, we are doing a COVID test to ensure that they do not test positive. Throughout our hospital, you'll see a different look because just like in other places, we're social distancing. So, our waiting rooms are a little less crowded. Our cafeteria is a little less crowded. Our break rooms are a little less crowded. We try to minimize the number of staff that are in patient rooms, all things that we should be familiar with at this point. We are doing temperature and system checks every day for every employee, every physician, every visitor, and every patient. Masking is a big part of our new life. We're doing the same at the hospital. All of our staff will be wearing proper personal protective equipment, depending on what clinical area they're in, depending on what type of patient that they're caring for, having appropriate personal protective equipment, and making sure that everybody in the hospital has a mask. And then, we certainly escalated our level of sanitizing the hospital, so deep cleaning in a way that we've never done before with great detail. Hospitals are always focused on being infection-free and being a clean environment, but taking it to the next level has been a lot of focus for us. Of course, it's going to affect things as well, so you won't see toys and magazines in waiting areas. Our water fountains are off limits. Our coffee makers, vending machines are also off limits, again, out of an abundance of caution to make sure that our patients, our staff, and our community stays safe. And the last thing that I would mention with what we're doing moving forward is making sure that we cohort our COVID-related patients and the staff that are caring for those in certain areas to minimize the traffic of those patients in certain areas. I would also point you to our website. We have a great coronavirus resource center that can answer additional questions that you have about Stonecrest or coronavirus in general. And the last thing that I would like to mention is two things as we move forward. Really plead for your support and the community's mindfulness to not delay care when you need it. Don't delay seeking that care. Emergent healthcare needs don't stop during a pandemic. Hospitals certainly don't stop either. We are here to serve. EMS is here to serve. If you need care, seek it. Unfortunately, there are stories in our community and throughout this country, throughout this world, where patients let fear dictate their healthcare decision-making, and that is not the right thing to do. If you're sick and you need care, don't delay. Seek that care. It is safe for everyone to call 911. It is safe for everybody to go to the hospital. Don't delay that care. If you could take that message, that would be wonderful. And then, the last thing that I would add, certainly one of the, sort of the shortcomings or the downfalls of this pandemic, among other things, is we are beginning to see an uptick in mental illness in the hospital. And you can attribute it to many things. There's not a lot of research out to show what exactly it may be attributed to, but we're certainly seeing an escalation of that. And so, my ask of you is to self-reflect on where you stand mentally. Check on your family. Check on your friends and be willing to ask the tough questions because people are social beings. They're used to a system and a network that has worked for them historically, and if that's taking away from them, people will struggle with their behavioral health. And just ask people to be mindful of that. And again, back to that previous message, if you are having challenges, don't delay. Seek care and hold each other accountable and be supportive in our community to those that are struggling with it. Thank you for the opportunity to share. Truly is an honor.
Great. Any questions for Lou?
Just a word of thanks. I think the community is appreciative of having a top-quality hospital as we have out there.
I appreciate you saying that. It's our pleasure.
Well, we look forward to continued partnerships over the coming years. And if there's anything at all we can do for you all, don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Brian, any awards or recognitions?
Nothing.
Okay. Then, we will move on to item six, which is our consent agenda. And these are items determined by our town manager to be routine matters and don't necessarily need discussion, but if there is any item that a council member would like to pull off and vote on individually, we can do that. I always like to read the consent agenda just so those in the audience, as well as those at home, know exactly what we are voting on. So, our first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a development agreement with Suncrest Real Estate and Land relative to the road impact fee offsets for the Cedar Hills development. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Rollins Excavating relative to the annual concrete work. Item C is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Jones Brothers Contractors LLC relative to the asphalt paving. Item D is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Burris Thompson and Associates relative to the compensation study and recommendations for adjustments. Item E is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a change order with United Systems and Software relative to the Itron Gas AMI project. Item F is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Rockwell Automation relative to the technical support for the water treatment plant, booster stations, and tank sites. Item G is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute material contracts for the following with the Water and Sewer, United Systems, GNC Supply, Core &amp; Main, Southern Pipe, Badger Meter, Fortaline, CNI Thornburg, and Ferguson Waterworks. For the gas is Chris George Supply, Equipment Controls, GNC Supply, United Systems, Richards Manufacturing, Experitec Incorporated, EYSCO, Honeywell, Elster, American, and Mercury Instruments. Item H is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services extension agreement with Dan Weaver Service relative to the water leak survey. Item I is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Dempsey-Dilling relative to the Risk and Resiliency Emergency Response Plan Assessment. And item J is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the Fourth Amendment to the cell tower lease at Hilltop Johnson Street. Any items someone would like to pull off?
Mayor, item A. I think we need to remove that completely tonight.
If you need explanation, we were contacted by the developer today and they asked for this agreement to be taken off of the agenda for a vote tonight. They want to come back to the council. They've got a request that would need to be approved by the council that we can get into at a later time.
Okay. Jeff, do we need to do anything in regards to deferral on that or anything? Or just pull it off?
Just pull it off.
Just pull it off. Okay. Okay, so we will pull off item A. Any other item on consent?
You don't need to pull it off, Mayor, but can I ask a quick question on item H?
Okay.
And that's basically talking about the water survey. Do we know, does this just tell us that there's a leak there or does it tell us how big it is where we can determine which ones to maybe set a priority on?
Yes. What Dan Weaver does, he'll come in and do an annual survey and also on an as-needed basis if there's places where leaks are hard to find or pinpoint, he'll come in and help us with that.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. You have the items. Other than item A, before you on consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Move to approve with the exception of item A.
Go a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes other than item A. Moving on to our old business. Tonight, we have three public hearings. Our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 34G, Group A, Parcel 1.00, to amend the existing PRD. It's requested by Robert Latimer. The property contains 1.45 acres and it's located at 655 through 673 South Lowry Street, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is an existing PRD that has been requested to be amended. There are no changes to the density or anything that is planned here other than the maximum height that was allowed as part of the original PRD was 40, and this will allow building height up to 50 feet. And this was, basically was something that came up about upon a request of our town utilities department regarding, there's an existing 18-inch water line in front of the property and they were going to have to build a retaining wall to have the buildings at 40 feet. And so, this will allow for that. The wall was going to be on top of the water line. So, this will allow for the building footprint to basically say the same, but allow for a little bit taller building. And this will be a max. It wouldn't necessarily be 50 feet, but it would be up to 50 feet. Again, that is the only change. It's still the same development as far as maximum number of units and everything. Did include the elevations, including the revised elevations with the tall buildings in your package. There's nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading. The planning commission did review it and did recommend approval.
Okay. We've talked about this a couple of times. Since it is a second reading, does anyone have any questions for Kevin on this? Okay. Then, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against Hi. If you will come forward. Oh, no. You're just watching? Okay. So, anyone to speak for or against this item? Okay. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item B, which is our second public hearing, which is the consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021. And this also is a second reading. Rex?
Mayor and Council, the ordinance and detailed budget for fiscal year 21 are submitted for your consideration. I have attached a changes from first read to second read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the first reading. And as you can tell, those are very, very minor changes that were made for the second read.
Questions for Rex on this? Between our council retreat and multiple emails back and forth with Brian and first reading, I think we've all gotten a pretty good handle on the budget. I don't know that it will necessarily be as we see it throughout the entire year based on things beyond our control. So, any questions for Rex on this? Okay. Then, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against adopting the budget. Okay. Then, we'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Diane, did you get that?
I didn't get who made the motion. I have to say.
It was six that made the motion.
Are we fighting over who's making the motion?
Everybody likes that budget.
Oh, so Steve's saying he made the motion. Okay. And Mark, you seconded it?
I think I did.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for the fiscal year 2020, 21, and this is a second reading. Rex?
Mayor and Council, our recommendation is for the tax rate to stay the same as it was last year at 70.07 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay. Seeing no questions, then I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against our property tax rate. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
A move we approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Rex, just out of curiosity, after we pass the budget, do you like to go out and celebrate or anything?
What's that look like? I just need to know.
He goes to sleep for 48 hours.
Come coffee after 6:00 P.M.
Almost too tired to party.
Okay. Thanks for all your hard work, Rex. We appreciate it. We'll now move on to new business, and we actually only have one item under our planning commission report, and this is a consideration of an easement to the Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation within the Paul Johns Neighborhood Park. Kevin?
Mayor and Council, based on what we already got submitted for next month, I think it's going to be the only time this happens. But this is just one item tonight under the planning commission report. Middle Tennessee Electric has requested that the town grant an easement within the Paul Johns Neighborhood Park on Rock Springs Road, Nile on Drive. This is to extend electrical power to serve the Enbridge Regulator Station, which was formerly, most folks know it as, the Texas Eastern, but it's now Enbridge, isn't the name of the company now, which is actually adjacent to the park, but the power will be coming through our park. So, planning commission did review this donation and found it consistent with the long-range plan and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Mark or Tim, anything from you guys?
Nothing, no, Mayor.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So, move we approve.
For a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to our packaged liquor board report. Since there were no applications for the town council to consider, we'll move on to item C, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Larry Talbot Esquire relative to title and closing services for the Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane Utilities Project. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council, just as it states within the agenda summary that you just mentioned, this will allow for Larry Talbot's office to prepare the closings, title opinions, et cetera, for the properties that will be needing to obtain for the Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane utility improvement.
Okay. Questions for Jeff on this?
What is the improvements, the utility improvements there?
I'll defer to the mic.
At Weekly.
So, this is one of our water model projects. There's a restriction on Sam Ridley close to Jefferson Pike that we need to remove and upgrade that line. And in doing so, we'll take it all the way to Weekly Lane and then upgrade the line to a larger size going up a portion of Weekly Lane as well.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I didn't have anything under other. There was nothing on my desk.
Nothing under other.
Nothing under other. Okay. We are on to status reports. Anything tonight, Jeff?
Happy Father's Day to the fathers out there.
Happy Father's Day to the fathers out there, including mine.
Good. Brian?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I have a couple of things I want to share with you, just in the form of an update. I know a lot of our listeners are anticipating when our pool will open, and I just wanted to go on record and let you know that right now, the splash pad at Gregory Mill Park and the pool facilities at Splash Town, as well as the playground equipment in our parks and the basketball courts will remain closed. We will continue to monitor that. We are keeping an eye on it as far as the governor's release. And I know that sounds somewhat contradictory to what the governor has said about water parks and some of those things. Problem we have is that our, our pool is built more as a party pool than a lap pool. And because of the ability to keep people in bunches of their family units only and those type of things, it's hard for us to dictate how the pool can be used. And my gosh, any of you have been around a pool and the kids go in, it's, you know, Katie bar the doors. They're all over the place. So it's, it's got a lot to do with the touch points and those type of things. You know, it's, it's, it would be hard to limit, you know, twenty people in the pool at a time or thirty people in the pool at a time versus just not opening the pool. But we will continue to monitor that. We hope to have some feeling as far as the pools by the end of this month, but I just wanted to go on record to let you know where we're at, and thank you for understanding. One other thing I wanted to announce from the standpoint of announcements, we have recently added to our staff in the area of the admin department, Holland Shellhouse. I don't know if Holland, I think she's out there. If we could get her maybe to step in, just so she can be introduced. She is our executive administrative assistant. I'll be working directly with the council and with myself as town manager and two of our assistant town managers. So Holland comes to us with a pretty impressive resume. She has just completed a one-year fellowship with the town of Franklin, working through all aspects of municipal government there, and she just recently completed a master's degree in administrative management. So she's, she's a young lady that has aspirations of going a long way in municipal government, so we're happy to have her on board and have her working with us. So I did want to introduce her. So thank you, Holland.
We're glad to have you.
Welcome.
I hear that she plays a mean guitar. I've heard that.
Does she play golf?
Is that right?
Does she play golf?
Mayor Moore is having it up more than he should.
Well, Mark plays the drums, so maybe we need to get together.
Travis is actually getting ready to hire me for the first day.
There you go. There you go. So Travis, you need somebody for guitar. Holland can do that too, so.
She's working on getting Kathy to approve a TikTok app for the town of Smyrna, so.
Oh.
That's a whole other story.
For those of you that can't see, Kathy's in the back doing more like this. I was just fixing to break into Wipeout.
So welcome aboard.
We are glad to have you, and I know we have a lot of fun, but we actually get quite a bit of work done, and I think we will see that over the next couple of weeks as you're here, so we're glad to have you. Thanks.
If I could, just very quickly, I have two other things that I just wanted to share that came in the, to my office from citizens in, in the area of saying thank you to our employees. Sherry Bowen sent a nice voicemail to the utilities department. I don't have the voicemail to share with you, but basically she was having some trouble locating the sewer cleanout at her house and was having trouble with some folks in the plumbing business to help her. She called Melanie in the G I S, and we actually sent some of our folks out, David, Nick, Mike, and Brad, in the utilities side of our business with their camera, and they were able to help her find that and take care of her problem at her house. The last one I have is, and I'm going to, her last name is Kiesler, Mrs. Kiesler, sent in a nice email, a text message in through the web, Facebook webpage, just thanking our local police department for the work they do in our community. She had taken our citizens' police academy and just had wonderful things to say about our officers and, and the police force that we have here in Smyrna. She said she'd actually opened her house a couple of times to dinners with some of the police officers and said she was looking forward to when this COVID situation was over and we could start doing some of those kind of things again. So just the, the proof in the pudding of our citizens' academy making those relationships in the community and seeing our police officers in a positive light. So just wanted to share that tonight.
Great, thank you. Ms. Diane? Okay, Raquel?
I'd like to say Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers. And then I also have something that I want to say, and I'm going to have to read it because I wanted to make sure that I didn't leave anything out. I have had several conversations about the state of our country and town that I've initiated with individuals, and I want to thank those folks for letting me engage you. But I want to also say that I, no one has taken the initiative to call to see how I'm doing or to understand what my position is on these issues. But I've been struggling not only over this week, but for quite a while. My heart is heavy and sad, and I am torn. I am encouraged by the behaviors of some, but disappointed with others. But I do have hope. As the mother of a daughter and a son that will need to live in this society and be productive members, I have to do my part to make whatever changes I can to address the issues as they exist. And if I don't speak up now, I feel that I'll be failing them. So my condolences to the families of individuals who have lost their lives over the last several months in this struggle for racial injustice and police brutality in the country. To people like George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, but also to officers on the other side of that issue, retired St. Louis Police Captain David Dorn, and Officer David Patrick Underwood, and many others. Next, I want to say to the men and women in blue that go out and serve and protect our community every day, thank you. You place your lives on the line every day so that the citizens of our town can live in a safe place. That, to me, is special, and I am grateful for all that you do. We as citizens may never understand the sacrifices that you make, but we can also not ignore that there is a small percentage of officers that may commit bad acts against people that look like me that are unarmed, and that cannot and should not be acceptable to any of us. But I have confidence locally in our chief that a hard, honest review of police policies and procedures has taken place and that anything questionable would be addressed. I also have faith in our town manager to make sure that that happens as well. But behaviors by officers that profile, use excessive force, or abuse authority should not be accepted or tolerated and should not, and should be called out on what, in whatever agency they are with. It should not be hidden and definitely not swept under the rug. As my grandmother used to say, one bad apple can ruin an entire barrel. That's why it has to be called out, because wrong is wrong. But bad apples not only exist in police precincts, they exist in all areas of our society. No one is saying that it doesn't happen to others at times, but right now, I need to address a specific race, and that's mine. People of color suffer social injustices and inequality throughout our, our society by all kinds of bad apples, and much of it is systemic as a result of the history of this country. When healthcare is dispensed unequally and people who look like me can't get medical care for treatable issues and as a result are dying at higher rates from a disease that has no cure, no cure like COVID nineteen, there is a problem. When our legal system has racial biases in the way it arrests and the judicial system has differential sentencing or conviction rates for people of color, there is a problem. When I can't walk in a store and not be followed or watched or have a police call on, called on me because I look a certain way, but mind you, I've done nothing wrong, there is a problem. When I can't earn the same amount of money in my job and I have equal the education, the experience, and skill set and many times greater than my counterpart, there is a problem. When the media continually and consistently chooses to show black people as one-dimensional in demeaning and negative ways convincing the world that this is representative of a whole race of people rather than portraying us as individuals with feelings and emotions, there is a problem. When these things happen on a daily basis for people who look like me, there's definitely a deep-rooted problem. And people of color did not create this problem, and that's just something to think about. But let me also speak on a local level. The town of Smyrna has come a long way. We've grown from a town of fifty-six hundred in the seventies when I was born to fifty-one thousand people here in twenty twenty, a town that is full of diversity and people from all walks of life. And I'm encouraged by how far we have come, but I am also not going to sit here and act like racial inequalities haven't existed in my town. I was born and I was raised here, and I remember how it used to be. Now, there was a time when blacks and whites did not go to the same school and were not allowed to play on the same sports teams, when blacks could only live in certain parts of town, when people of color were encouraged to stay in their place and not to make others feel uncomfortable. I know a time when the N-word was a commonplace and the term "boy" was spoken to grown black men was an acceptable thing. And although these things are not spoken of, they did happen, and my family has lived through them. And my concern is, as the saying goes, that those who don't know their history are destined to repeat it, and I refuse to ignore my history. Some of you may be upset that I've brought these things up, but if you are, then that's part of the problem too. If we are not willing to take an honest look at our past, then we won't be able to truly move into our future. You may not like where we came from, but I can't change that, but I won't let others erase it either. Please know that I don't bring these things up to bash my town. I love Smyrna. My roots here are deep, deeper than most. My great-grandmother's grandmother bought property here in nineteen oh seven, which a black woman buying and owning property at that time is unheard of. So believe me when I tell you that I want the best for this town. I bring these things up to say we've come a long way, but we have further to go. I know that I'm the result of the progress that our town has made. I am a product of my community. I'm the first black person to ever be elected to this town council, and I am humbled and honored to serve. My place here is not a fluke, though. I earned the right to be elected to this position. I recognize the significance of the advancement, and I don't take it lightly. Not speaking up about racial injustices would continue to be a disservice to people who look like me and also to this town as a whole. Because of the challenges I face in my profession and in my life in general, sometimes, I want y'all to know that I carry a copy of the Constitution with me everywhere I go. I do that so I can remind myself what this country promises to me as a citizen. I also recite the pledge when we do because I believe what it says. "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, not for some, but for all." We talk about wanting to make Smyrna a place where you can live, work, and play. If it's not a place where people of all races, colors, and ethnicity can feel safe and be treated equally to do these things, then we're not living up to our mission. So Mayor and my fellow council members, just a reminder, we have a responsibility to all the citizens of this community to ensure that we work hard for this mission to be true for everyone. To quote Ronald Reagan, "There are no easy answers, but there are some simple answers. We must have the courage to do what we know is morally right." He also said that freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it on to our children in their bloodstreams. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same. So until we can look at each other in the eye and see a person for who or she, he, for who she or he is and not judge based on skin color, injustices will continue and we need to be caught, and they will need to be called out. Each individual person has to be seen as a human being first. I encourage you all to not just talk about the issues now because society has decided that it's politically correct to do so. You can't walk in our shoes, but you can exercise true compassion and empathy to try to understand better what people of color face on a daily basis by talking about these issues with people that do not look like you, with friends, with neighbors, and even strangers. So for each of you who have been willing to come out of your comfort zone and discuss issues of race and not just offer your opinions, I applaud you and I thank you. Until we see people as individuals and talk honestly about our concerns, our prejudices, and fears, the divide between races won't go away. So for any of you who only see a black person when you see me out in this town or when you see me out at, at an event, I encourage you not just to see my skin, my skin color. Let me help you understand my humanity. I am a forty-eight-year-old, single, divorced mother of two. I have a son and a daughter who are my priority. I hold a law degree from one of the top twenty-five law schools in America. I am a local business owner with my own law practice, and I've been practicing law for twenty-three years. I am home, I also homeschool my two children, and I am part of a town, I come from a part of town called Hilltop, where we believe in family and community and we support each other wholeheartedly. I like sports. I'm a proud Smyrna Bulldog. I laugh, I cry, I feel pain. I am slighted, I am dismissed, and I am ignored on a daily basis. See, racism sometimes is obvious, but many times it's very subtle, and oftentimes it can be debilitating to the person who receives it. So every day, I look at my kids in their eye, in their eyes, and I tell them that I love you and your life matters, because when they go out into the world, I know that they may not be treated with such respect, and I want to apologize for this. I shouldn't have to prove that I am worthy of your kindness, your acknowledgement, or your human decency. But this is the reality in which we live, so I will just leave it at that and sum it up with this. At the end of the day, black people want what you want, to be able to live, work, and play in a place that they can be safe, they can be treated as human beings, they can raise their families, go to work for an honest-earned wage, and make it safely at home at night, just like you.
Thank you for those words and for speaking your part. I think that was important.
Thank you.
HG?
I hear, acknowledge, and respect what you say. This past Sunday was my daughter's birthday. This coming Sunday is my son's birthday. I'm very blessed with the children than I have and to be able to live in a place where we live like we do. And as we go forward, you know, I want my children, my grandchildren, to also have the great benefits that all should have. Happy Father's Day to all.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that I can talk either one of these guys as far as what they said. Thank you, Raquel. I appreciate you and I. And I'm not sure I can say I understand. I try to understand, and I'm always available for conversations. And HG, you do have a wonderful family. I'm blessed to know you and, and everyone on here, some longer than others, and I appreciate that opportunity. And I look forward and continue to look forward to serve this town to make it the best that it can ever be.
Jerry?
Raquel, thank you for what you said. I appreciate that. And you're right, I don't know. And I think, my wife and I have talked, I have a better understanding, but I'll never understand, you know, because I've never walked in those shoes. And, you know, our country does need healing, but we, I will try to be better, I can tell you that. But I did want to say, and, and was, I've missed, I've missed this group out here, and I wanted to say that some of you I haven't seen in a while, Miss Appleton and Donna, you, you guys are always here, and I'm so good to see you here tonight. Chief, you was always out there taking pictures, so it's good to see, good to see you back too. But, you know, again, thank you for what you said. I appreciate that. That's all I have there.
Steve?
Raquel, the only thing I want to say is I've never looked at you and saw your color. I may be one of those people that don't think that way. I was raised in the same town, and there's prejudices that have been ingrained in our society for years that come through inadvertently, but I don't see color. When I see you, I see an accomplished attorney, a mother of two, and a fellow councilman, and that's what I see. I appreciate you saying the things that you've said and bringing to light the perspective that you have and what you have to see and go through that we may not realize. Like Jerry said, I don't know. I can't know. And I'm, I'm going to be honest, I'm glad that I don't have to know. And I'm gonna be honest, I'm glad that I don't have to know, which sounds selfish, but I think that it's the truth. I hope that you don't think that every white person in this town sees you as a black woman because that's not true. And I can assure you that when I see people of color, I don't notice their color. I don't even think of them that way. Usually, someone else has to bring it to my attention for it to even factor into my thought process. So I appreciate you serving on the council with us. I appreciate you giving your perspective, as you often do, because without you, it would be five, six white men and Mayor Esther. And I think your diversity, we've said that since the day that we got elected, is that we probably have the best council we've ever had because we have more diversity than we've ever had. I think we could use a little more at times, and I would encourage those people to come out and get a seat on the council because that's what makes us stronger as a town when we truly represent everyone in the community. It's hard for me to tell you that I can represent people of color in the decisions and the things that I do. I try to, but since I don't have that perspective, it's hard for me to consider it always. And that's why you're here, to give us that perspective when we don't have it. So I appreciate you sharing your point, but I also just want to make sure the point is that not all of us see it that way. I'm gonna be honest, I hadn't reached out to you to check on you because I honestly never thought about apologizing or coming to you for something that I don't even see. And that's the problem, is I don't even see it. And so there's good and bad. When you don't see color, you don't think about it, right? And that's the bad part of it. So I appreciate you saying what you said, and I hope that you feel free to bring anything that any of us say, do, or react intentionally or unintentionally. I hope you know you can bring that to our attention. Not necessarily prefer you do it privately, but you can do it how you need to. If at any time I make you feel like I'm treating you inferior, I want you to say something. Or if you think I'm doing that to any people you know. If that's never my intention, then that's not something that I strive to ever try to do. And I really believe there's a lot of people in this town that I've grown up with that feel the same exact way. So for that, thank you. I do want to say, I got the opportunity to travel to California to visit my son and to Florida with my daughter and her husband. So in the last 10 days, I've visited California, Colorado, Florida, Tennessee, and Alabama. And I will tell you that every single community is handling COVID-19 and the coronavirus differently. Honestly, Smyrna is somewhere in the middle. There was places in Florida where it almost seemed like it wasn't going on. There was places in California where they were afraid to look at each other. So it was kind of both. But I'm very proud, I was very proud to come back home and see how we have handled it. And honestly, I feel like I've seen the extremes, and we're right in the middle, and I think that's where we should be. And I think that's a testament to the work you've done, Brian. Before this meeting, we did your annual review and gave you our perspectives of the job you're doing. Publicly, I just want to say we have the best town manager that we could have for a situation like this. I think you're doing better or more than any of us expected that you would do, and I appreciate the work you're doing and hope that you continue to feel comfortable and happy and willing to keep doing the job you're doing. You mentioned you might do it for free, so, you know. It'll be all right. I'm just joking. Thank you, though. Thank you very much.
I'm smeared.
Okay, couple of housekeeping items. Oh, sorry. Mark, Mark, sorry.
She just forgot, yeah, I guess.
Sorry, sorry.
Raquel, I heard your words, I heard your pain. I had no idea, really, that you felt that deeply and hurt about some of the issues that our country's facing. I do want to say something that has been on my heart too because, you know, my father, Raquel knows this story well, she reached out a lot while my father was struggling. And I appreciated that more than anybody knows, and I feel like I've let her down because I haven't checked on her, but maybe I have. But I do want to echo a little bit about what Steve said. Because I don't view that that way, I've got some real prime examples in my life, and I want to talk about those just real quick if I can, my father being one of them. And my mother, who's since passed, always taught me right from wrong, always taught me to respect everybody. And I hope I carry that banner. Some other examples I have, one of them's in the room. He's sitting back there, Travis. I belong to Life Point Church, Rex, Raquel, Tim's been a member there. Our church is on a mission to make people that come to our church feel comfortable no matter what their ethnicity or color or whatever you want to call it is. Our pastor gets in the pulpit and preaches about this almost on a weekly basis. Our pastor has a mixed family himself from adoption. So I have some great examples to look up to and appreciate when it comes to seeing people as people for what they are and not necessarily breaking them down into different categories. Sin is sin. To me, that's sin. I don't know why things happen in the world. You know, we've all seen and watched things unfold with the recent protests and things that have happened over George Floyd's death. I'm a believer that God has control of all things. That's just who I am. Some people may think that's short-sighted. I happen to think that's the gospel, that's the truth. And so when I say that, I say this. Things do happen. Nothing's completely out of God's control. So for a time such as this, whatever the reason is behind that, I think our world is paying attention. I think people are beginning to listen more. I hope there's healing taking place. And we all can be better at not focusing on a race or a color or an ethnicity, but focusing on them as children of God. And let's pay attention that way. Let's encourage people that way. I've probably been weak in some aspects there too, so for that, I'm sorry, and I hope I can do better. And I want to leave it there. Now, that said, churches are opening back up, and, you know, it's great to see that. And I think the community needs their churches, their synagogues and things open back up. And, you know, I heard Luca Pudo talk about mental illnesses becoming more and more of a fact in our communities. I don't know if that's systemic from the COVID thing or not, I don't know. Depression sets in for a lot of people, suicides, things of that nature. So I think we really need to continue to lift up our community in prayer, deep prayer, and stay focused on who we are and what we're here for. The rest is white noise. It's like when your TV goes out, it's just, you know, the fuzz on your TV. It's not that important. It's really not that important. Then results where we're all heading, hopefully, one day. So I just want to share my heart there, and I want to leave it right there. That's all I have there.
Okay, a couple of housekeeping items. The town of Smyrna's annual Fourth of July celebration has been canceled this year. We look forward to a time when we can gather and celebrate together. And I'll be honest, I've had some calls about that, some emails about that. What people may not realize is it takes us months to plan the event. It, in regards to working with power techs and working with staff and how to handle that, and we just did not feel that we could do that with not knowing what was going to be happening by July 3rd. So we encourage you to celebrate Fourth of July. We just won't be doing it at the Rec Park this year, but we look forward to next year. Our Smyrna Depot Farmers Market successfully opened on May the 23rd and will be open each Saturday from 8:00 until noon through September 19th. There are modifications that are in place. I've spoken to quite a few people who have been down and says it's been very successful, and there's been some great food able to be purchased. So thanks to those that are making the Depot Farmers Market happen. Cedar Zone Community Park ribbon-cutting ceremony has been rescheduled. We ask that you join us Wednesday, June the 17th at 4:00 at 3639 Morton Lane. We are looking forward to cutting the ribbon on the new park that was actually scheduled to happen right before the pandemic happened, so it's been on hold for a little while, but we welcome you all out, and we will be practicing social distancing at that event. Please don't forget to complete your 2020 census today. Funding for our school lunches, plans for highways, support for firefighters, and so much more is impacted by our census. You can respond in one of three ways. You can do it online, by phone, or by mail. You can visit www.2020census.gov for more information. Since we were together, we have, many of you were on the call about the airport master plan, so lots of things taking place at the airport, and we look forward to years to come of the great things. I think sometimes we forget about what a great resource we have right here in the city limits with the airport. Brian, I just want to thank you for the job we've done. I think Steve talked about the evaluation that we did prior to the meeting. I don't think there could be anybody better to lead us during this time. And other times, you do a great job. When we sat down to hire a new town manager, one of our major priorities was our employees. And we wanted to make sure we had somebody in place that not only took care of our community, but also made sure our employees were a priority. And I don't think there's any employee that could say that Brian does not do that. That is what he thinks about on a daily basis. So we appreciate you, and we appreciate the job that you do. That is all I have. I'd also like to wish all the fathers out there a Happy Father's Day. And is there anything else to come before this call? Nothing else?
Be kind.
Yes, be kind, that's right. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.